It looks like we won't have anyone here for our invocation. Is anybody willing to or interested in offering our invocation this evening? I'll give it a try. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us as always, strengthen us to make the best decisions for the city. I pray that you will make all our decisions in the best interest of the city's residents and businesses. I pray that we will be true to your word. Father, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. I call our meeting of Perry City Council. But we're... Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devon, would you call the roll, please?
Mike Connel, Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galvine.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Al Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sue Hammond. All the council floor, council member Mike Connel is absent, and Mayor Sue Hammond, Mayor Proten, Larry Lambert will begin our meeting.
Okay, right now looking for approval of this evening's agenda or any modifications thereof.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per...
Second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I get clarification on the second?
Steve. All opposed? Motion passes. Looking for approval for the this evening, excuse me, last meeting minutes or any modifications thereof.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the September 1st, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion made by Steve and seconded by Chad. And that brings us to pre-approved reports and presentations. I believe we have JB here this evening to give us an update on the community district library. Turn it over to you.
Thank you for having me back. I have the annual report. As you, most of you know, we wrap up our fiscal year at the end of June, so everybody gets these wonderful numbers, the statistics that I love to look at every year. I try to make it more user-friendly on the eye. Is that what you have? I have more, I have more. Okay. I have a lot of them. Okay. So, these are statistics librarians like to look at every year, and we find it important. You're welcome. And of course, municipalities also like to look at this stuff over. But first, I'm going to start off with highlight of the past year, especially at the Perry branch. As you are aware, we were able to get the entire inside and outside updated. Thank you to City Council for funding the outside portion. The new windows are fabulous, the outside looks wonderful. Large windows, they're new and they're bright. It really, really makes the space look so much nicer. And we've had nothing but a lot of compliments on the interior of the building. It's really light and bright on the furniture, increased space. We were able to create an entrance in the back, so a lot of people can park back there. Just nothing but positive feedback that I've heard so far. As you know, we were closed down for about three months, and we were able to not get out in pretty much the timeframe which I expected to. And we reopened, I believe, the first week of June. So, we're happy that we're open, and we've had a lot of new patrons sign up for library cards and visit, so all positive stuff. And thank you to DPW, too, who they removed a lot of the, we had mobile bookcases that we rented, some furniture that we had brought in and delivered while we were closed down. They brought everything back on a very hot day, a very hot sweaty day. It was a lot of work moving everything in, and then we had to snack food with the furniture that arrived. On what, we, it was delivered to the back, and with the help of some members of the fire department, they helped us, you know, undo the crates with all of their, I don't know what they call them, but their crowbars and that type of thing that they have. And so, we loaded everything into the library. Otherwise, it probably would have never been done on time, and we wouldn't have been able to been open when we wanted to. So, community effort, and it's very much appreciated. As far as the, and we still have Carol and Christine Murphy, who are two staff members. Carol went over to corona to work in Morris, and so she was working the whole time. Christine decided to take a few months off, so it worked out really well for everybody. As far as CDL district-wide, everything's been going very, very well. We're really close to being back up to the same number of visits pre-COVID, because the last two years have been, as everybody knows, insane. But we're very close to the same number of visitors. We had almost 56, well, over 56,000 people in all of our libraries, visit the library branches. We had close to 67,000 checkouts total, and of those, over 16,000 were downloads of e-content, so that increases, digital content increases every year. So, we continue to put more and more money towards that. We were able to keep our branches open all year, in-person programming for most of the year, a lot of intra-library loan programs. We had about 3,400 people. It's kind of hard to track attendance for programs, but we do the best we can. But district-wide, we had about 3,400 people attend programs. And I was happy to see also that our summer reading program was up to, very, very close to normal numbers, so about 730 kids signed up. A lot of that is due in part to badge books, which we started using badge books two years ago, which the kids seem to really love. We also were approved for the Emergency Connectivity Fund last year, which is that federal grant that allowed us to purchase hotspots, 105 hotspots district-wide to check out, tablets, and Chromebooks. And I reapplied for that in the springtime, and I finally found out a couple of weeks ago that we were approved for the funding this year, so we can offer those again. Because it's not cheap to now purchase those, but they offer the data package on those. So, there's a lot of people who still don't have internet, and that's been very helpful for them. And we, of course, have a great library cooperative who have, every year they give us grants for technology and that type of stuff. So, we've updated our, and added to our maker kits, our Wonder Books, which are audiobooks within the book, and Launchpads, which are learning tablets for kids. So, we've done quite a bit of that, and then we also now have a service called Tutor.com, which is virtual tutoring with a real person. So, somebody, if they're having an issue in math or whatever subject, it's for any subject, any age, elementary through college. So, if you need help with an algebra assignment, you can hop on Tutor.com, and a live person on the computer at least will pop up and help you through, through that problem. Tutors aren't cheap, and with, you know, a lot of people having to do virtual learning, some people have, some students have slid back in progress. So, we decided to add that service, and so far, I don't really have statistics on that, but I hope that people will utilize that. Aside from that, everything's going well. I don't have anything else to highlight. If you have any questions?
The tutor?
Yes.
That is awesome.
Isn't that cool? Yeah.
Do all the schools know that they can offer that?
I don't know if the schools know. I know we, we signed up for it in the spring, and I knew it wouldn't get a lot of use in the spring and summer. So, we plan to remarket very shortly, because school just started, probably about three weeks ago. So, we do plan to remarket that, and the newspapers and on social media, we have all of the information on our website. But I should probably contact the schools and let, that's a good idea.
I just found with my three girls, all different type of education levels on how they absorb it.
Yeah.
And actually, my oldest, education came well, but as she got more and more advanced, there were some subjects she had difficulty. And she was embarrassed of asking a tutor, and I said, "What makes you any better than anybody else? If you're struggling, you need to ask for..." And I just think it's a, a good way that you don't have to tell anybody that you feel that you need some help. I think that's awesome.
Yeah.
Good job.
I sure hope people, I sure hope people take advantage of it.
Yeah.
And it's very convenient, and it's open, not quite 24 hours a day, but I think it's open definitely when the kids are out of school through around midnight or something like that. So, in any subject area. And I know I had tutor class pretty much my whole time in high school. So, I do hope people take advantage of it.
Yeah, for the people that are embarrassed, you know, like I said, and then I had one that struggled with it, and, and some people put a stigma on themselves, you know, if they ask for help, and this is a way that nobody knows, and they're getting what they need at the same time.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
I just echo, it sounds like a great tool, and anything you can do to get the information out there, particularly with as new as it is, it gets enough traction or to model itself.
Yeah, and really, the age range is, it's, like I said, elementary, kindergarten, all the way through, college students can use it too. It's a good resource.
Any other comments or questions for JB? If not, thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Certainly welcome to stay, but...
If you haven't visited the library yet, please visit us. Say hi to Carol and Christine, so, and thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, do we have anyone here this evening for public comments? During that, let's move on to communications. Devon, do you have any communications this evening?
I have a couple. I just want council to make note that you received attorney correspondence tonight. Also, I would like to remind everyone that Septem, or Saturday, this Saturday, September 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Perry Classic Car Show will be taking place at the Veterans Park, just right here where we're at. And also, we had a gentleman that dropped off the flyers for council. It's save the date. PFCU invites you to join the grand opening celebration Monday, October 3rd, ribbon-cutting ceremony, 150 South Main Street, Perry, on 10-322, 10:00 a.m. And it's a credit union, and if anybody is aware of the pharmacy, there is the open space next to them. This is where 150 South Main is located, where the new credit union is going to take place. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. The mayor didn't have any comments that you wanted me to make during the mayor reports. I'll only add one thing from my perspective. Along with that, on Saturday, there is the Perry Historical Society is holding an art and craft show at the McQueen House from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. I happen to know, because my wife's going to be there with a few crafts along with everybody else. So, you get an opportunity to come see the cars, come on downtown to McQueen House and check out the craft show. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Any committee reports this evening?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Mindy.
Personnel committee interviewed and chose someone to be the DPW superintendent, and had a lot of experience. My impression was that he's worked very hard to continually improve, go up the ladder throughout his career. He has worked in three or four DPW departments, and we hope that you will find him as suitable as we did. So, we recommend Kevin Tyler, who's in our audience, I'd like to introduce him, for our new DPW superintendent.
Well, I have a motion a little bit later on the agenda to go through and formally make a recommendation and decision.
Nice to meet all of you. Some of you I've met. Good to see you again.
Any questions for Kevin?
Anyone have any questions for Kevin?
Not right now. Thank you for going.
You'll be back up again in a couple of minutes, probably, Kevin.
Okay.
Thank you. On behalf of the ordinance committee, I'll just remind everyone that there is an ordinance committee meeting next Thursday, September 22nd, 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers. We'll continue our work on revising and reviewing a number of our city ordinances. Any other committee reports? There are no more, we'll move on to approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that the payment be authorized.
Second.
Okay, got any motion from Chad, seconded by Mendy, to approve the bills as presented and authorize payment. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passed, those are approved. We'll move on now to old business. First item on the agenda is the Chihuahua City tornado siren project. I did get an opportunity to talk with Kyle today very briefly, so I'm going to pass on just the quick discussion that I had, and certainly more to follow. But it appears that our tower is on Perry property, but the contract really says it's an American Tower solely responsible for its operation. So, it was Kyle's interpretation, obviously more to follow, that any use of the American Tower on our property for the countywide sovereign project will be a relationship between Chihuahua County and American Tower. So, more to follow, but that's kind of where it stands.
So, no action taken?
No action taken. Anything else on the, other questions on the sovereign project right now? Okay, we'll move on to discussion approval of the employee appreciation dinner. We spoke of this in our last meeting, I believe, and there was some question of what the total cost might be if we were to approve an employee appreciation dinner, if everyone were to show up. I believe everybody should have received in their pre-read material what that roughed-up cost would be. So, looking for any further discussion and/or a motion with regard to whether we want to hold an employee appreciation dinner this year.
Reading this, we're saying that it's, 1728 is going to be the maximum amount.
That'd be the maximum amount if...
If everyone came.
If everyone came and brought a significant over, that would be the maximum amount.
That would be 55 of appointed employees elected times two.
Okay. What was the number? I'm sorry. But I was just trying to make sure I understood it correctly. I thought that was correct, to make sure.
The first Friday of the month.
That first Friday in December.
I move that we approve the catering for December 2nd Employee Appreciation Christmas Party by Glenn Brier for an amount not to exceed $1,728, which includes a 20% criteria.
Second.
Okay, Bob moved, and Chad seconded, that we go ahead and approve up to $1,728 to hold an employee appreciation dinner on December 2nd. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now, we will move on to possible approval of a new hire. We just had heard from Mindy the recommendation to bring on Kevin Tyler as the new DPW superintendent. I think we've had a lot of back discussion that John had an interest in becoming the assistant or deputy superintendent, and so we've got an opportunity now to bring on a new superintendent for the city. Looking for any further discussion or questions and/or a motion to move forward.
Does that transition immediately, or is there, is there a...
I've asked, I've asked for it to coincide with a payroll, also allow Kevin to work with his current employers. So, the tentative date, as long as it works out with Kevin's current employers, is October 3rd.
Okay.
Is what we're looking at right now. And I also want to make a note, is everybody aware that Kevin was the only one that they interviewed due to, he was the first or the second choice out of the two from the first time? So, this wasn't our first round with Kevin, and I wasn't sure if there was anybody new from the last time we went through this, right, Mindy?
Right.
So, I just wanted to add that point, because I wasn't sure if we mentioned that at all.
I didn't.
I knew that.
Okay, I wasn't sure who, who might or might not on that part of it, so.
Kevin, is your, wherever you're at now, are you, you're, I understand you have all kinds of certifications in water and sewer and all that stuff. You're way ahead of the game with all those things, correct?
I am a certified water operator. I have an S2D2 water license, so I can operate the system here. I have to train and get the lagoon license for the sewer. Which should be completed within a year, is what we agreed upon with the committee.
John saw some problem with...
I don't either.
With his experience and, and those areas, John didn't feel that it was an issue that he...
And John currently does hold that license up, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're, the city's... We're covered. And I had a conversation with John. I didn't know Kevin's name at the time, but we did have a conversation, so.
You either...
I was correct.
We currently have John and Eric certified completely, so we actually even have a backup for John at this point.
You either are Kevin or en route to have necessary CDL certifications?
I have the, the correct CDL certifications to operate all equipment here.
I know that was, of course, an issue in the past, so...
Unless you have a semi truck. I've got a CDL B with air brakes, and I have my tanker endorsement to run, to operate the back door.
Yeah, you can run everything we have, whether there's a B.
Yeah, he has heavy equipment, operator experience and...
I've run road graders, bulldozers, excavators, all kinds of equipment. I got a close friend of mine runs a concrete crushing business, so he lets me go play in the sandbox, as he likes to say. All valuable things when it comes to this industry.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments at this point? If not, I'm looking for a, a motion.
I move that we approve the personnel committee's recommendation to hire Kevin Tyler as our new DPW superintendent at a starting wage of $63,000 annually.
Second.
Got a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob, to approve the personnel committee's recommendation to hire Kevin Tyler. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Welcome aboard.
Approved. Congratulations. And at this point, the agenda is not on there, but would like to go ahead, and if Devon is ready, do the necessary swearing in and...
Answering.
Photo of Kevin.
So, roughly two weeks, you start.
Correct.
You ready?
I am.
Okay. You ready, Mindy? Almost. Okay, we're going to make this very non painful. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and Organizes of the City of Perry, and that you will faithfully perform the duties as superintendent of public works according to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I swear.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, yes.
Well, actually, I'd love to have you do it there. You'll sign the date here. Thank you very much. It's Stephen in a couple of weeks. Well, probably sooner than now, but you know.
All set. Kevin, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. I understand if you've got other commitments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is possible approval of bonus. And what this revolves around is, still with the DPW activity, John Sauter put in an extraordinary amount of work and effort around the whole water tower project and maintaining our city's water supplies with virtually no glitches throughout the time, a couple of oopses and loss of power, et cetera, along the way. And so, I know that the mayor and others had discussed that it might be appropriate, given John's role in that, to award a bonus to John as he transitions from superintendent to deputy superintendent, but revolving around the overall success of that, that water project and restoring, refurbishing the water tower. I might add, I did learn from Sue in the conversation, it's not quite over yet, there's a couple of minor leaks that, that it's to be scheduled yet, but the water tower's going to have to be drained and a couple minor repairs done, exact TBD. So, John hasn't quite completed his efforts there, but certainly has put in a yeoman's effort thus far. Looking for any comments, discussions, questions around that.
Is our city policies on unpaid vacation, is that, do we usually pay it out, or is it use it or lose it?
This is not around...
I know, I'm just reading this. That's just inquiry, it's not, I have no issue with this, or I, I, if we do more, I do more, but...
We don't pay for unused vacation comp time?
Use it or lose it?
We do pay for unpaid vacation if we're answering what he asks.
Yes.
We do pay for 40 hours, which we pay out, but he is...
Of 240 hours.
Of 240 hours. But he is going from a salaried employee to an hourly employee, so that will roll over and will not get paid.
That was, that was my... Okay.
Okay.
But he'll get, as an hourly employee, still has...
An hourly employee, he still gets to carry over 40 hours of vacation, is what our policy says.
Roll it over to the next year, but you can only use so much.
Correct.
Right?
You're tapped out on 160, you can roll over 40, and then if you're excessive of that, you lose it.
Lose it, right?
Yes.
So, I thought it was...
Trying to recognize the fact that John was in here, you know, over at the wells at midnight, you know, getting things restarted, et cetera.
Absolutely.
We all know how conscientious he was during that period of time, and continues to be around that.
He's very dedicated to this show.
So, how concerned should we be about future requests or the same thing?
I, in my opinion, this, this, I, I've never seen this happen in 16 years. That's a long time. You very rarely see somebody asking to be dedicated and stepping up. And it would have to be in that circumstance, in my opinion, to show up, present us, and frankly, if it happened again, I would think council would support the issue again.
Yeah. This is not around...
This is not a typical situation.
Not around unpaid comp time, it's around the job that he stepped up and did.
Right, and then he's staying in with the city.
Yes.
Dedicated employee, but stepping down.
Yep.
Which is hard to do, to become a subordinate to something that you were the chief of, so... So I'm all, I'm fine with it personally.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody willing to make a motion around that topic?
I move to authorize $2,900 bonus to John Souter, which recognizes his extraordinary effort during the scheduled 2022 maintenance of the water tower and during power outages to maintain the safety of the city's drinking water.
I second.
We all second.
Okay. Moved by Bob, seconded by Mindy to authorize $29 bonus to John Souter for the extraordinary efforts around the water tower project. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Moving on to mayor's appointments. Sue has provided me a couple of items to cover in this area. The first one is following discussions with Bob Porter, involves the Parks Committee. The mayor has made Chad Fuller the chair of the Parks Committee. The Parks Committee will still consist of the following personnel. Chad Fuller as chair, Bob Porter, Mike Connell, and George Dunn will continue to stay on the Parks Committee. It's really a role change, as I understand it, to, to put Chad in the chairman role for that committee. Comments, questions, discussions?
I, I support that. Mayor called me and asked me if I'd be okay with it.
Okay.
After I hung up and stomped my feet, I called it. I, I think it's a good, it's fine. It's a good transition because I do need to focus on CESA, but I don't think we should not pursue and continue to look into a parks director. Where we, in my opinion, we cannot continue to just rely on volunteers to do these things.
That was a discussion, I believe, that we were going to go back and do a little research to see what some other communities of like, or slightly larger communities do in the area of part-time parks director, whatever, to try to come with a little framework that we could work from.
Right.
To see how it might fit, so.
It may have to involve, you know, some sort of joint partnership with Perry Township and Morris, and, you know, those to think outside the box.
Right.
As a city of Perry, yes, we may not be able to afford it, but with other people's help in our surrounding area, maybe we can.
Right.
The volunteers just can't, because I'm not trained, he's, he's not trained as a parks person, so we do our best and we come up with ideas, but there may be someone who went to school and has a degree in these things, or a minor or whatever, have different ways of doing things or ability to, you know, pursue them more.
We'll make sure that that stays as a topic for future agenda to see where we're at relative to the more background of where we might take that.
The last thing that was reported that the mayor and the treasurer are going to look into that, and I know they have got the research and obviously.
I know they started.
I know that they have, that they have discussed and they do have a report.
Okay, so this would put next meeting's agenda together, maybe appropriate that we add that to it. Okay, the mayor has also reappointed Chris McDivitt to the local officers' compensation commission for a term to expire October 2027. And looking for a, a motion, discussion or questions, this is a reappointment, but looking for any comments, if not, at least a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation.
I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Chris McDivitt to the local officers' compensation commission for a term to expire October 2027.
Second.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Chad to approve the mayor's appointment, a reappointment of Chris McDivitt to the local officers' compensation commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the grant opportunities for a, an additional siren for the City of Perry. I did have a brief conversation with, with Sue, and she indicated that she has had a conversation with James Hissong, our grant writer, and that once James has finished the work on the sidewalk grant application, if you recall, we approved some monies for that. If there's any monies or time left in that approved amount, he will go to work on a grant application for an additional siren for the city. If not, we may have to bring it back in here and approve a little more money, but James will in the future be working on a grant application to get us an additional siren. Comments, questions on that? Continues to be a work in process. No action taken at this time. Moving on to the next topic deals with our marijuana activity. Last meeting, we approved the changes to the ordinance for zoning as well as our codified ordinance in the area of marijuana. Now we're looking at actually setting the dates and the application lottery activity for the, supporting the ordinance. Looking for any comments, questions, eventually a, a motion, or excuse me, a resolution to go forward. Any discussion on that topic? Any questions on that topic? If not, I would like someone in particular, given the, the dates and timing, to, to read through the, the resolution in its entirety, so that everyone knows what the, the planned timing is going forward.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Michigan Water Spencer passed Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act of 2016 to allow medical marijuana facilities and Michigan Regulatory and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018, and whereas the City of Perry has decided to allow one medical retail marijuana provision center licensed within B1 and mixed zoning districts as specified in zoning ordinance section 3.31, 8.02, and 15.07 FAF. And whereas the city determined that a lottery system shall be used to select the one conditioning provisioning center retail license, and whereas the City of Perry considers it necessary and pertinent to hold an application period and lottery drawing, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Perry, Chiawassee County, Michigan, that first, the City of Perry has thereto foredetermined that it, that it is advisable.
Yep.
Necessary and in the public interest to establish a medical retail marijuana provisioning center retail license application window from 8:00 AM October 12th, 2022, to 3:00 PM November 10th, 2022. Second, each interested party shall submit no more than one application. Third, applications must be complete in order to be entered into the lottery drawing. The city staff shall act to approve or deny any application as fully complete no later than five business days from the date the application was received. Fourth, the city shall utilize the Michigan Daily Three Evening Lottery and Michigan Daily Four Evening Lottery drawings held on Monday, November 21st, 2022 at 7:29 PM to determine one conditional license winner. Fifth, a meeting is set for Monday, November 21st, 2022 at 7:15 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers to allow members of the public to observe the drawings as they are broadcast and/or streamed online. Sixth, at the December 1st, 2022 regular council meeting at 7:15 PM held in the City Hall Council Chambers, the one conditional license winner, first runner-up and second runner-up will be announced as determined by the lottery committee.
Of second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mindy and seconded by Steve that we approve the resolution as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, we're moving on now to another resolution surrounding the marijuana activity, and that deals with just reestablishing and verifying the fee schedule that will be used in that regard. Any comments or questions with regard to that before I ask someone to briefly review that, that resolution? Hearing that, I'll go ahead and read this one. I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. It is resolved that whereas the City of Perry ordinance section 860.02 provides that fees shall be charged by the city in accordance to fees established by the resolution of the City Council, the City of Perry does hereby adopt the following fee schedule. Section 860.02A, annual non-refundable fee of $3,000, single provisioning center slash retail license application fee, incomplete application will be refunded to full fee application, that amount is $5,000, and a refund partial amount of non-winning applicants is $2,500. The fee schedule adopted herein shall be effective immediately.
Second.
It's been moved by Larry, seconded by Steve to accept the resolution fee schedule as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion passes. We have one more, and that is the marijuana license application form that's up. And fundamentally, just as a review, that application form is very similar to the one that we had previously approved for medical marijuana in our prior journey in this area, and it fundamentally has just been updated to reflect the addition of the option of retail marijuana or adult use marijuana and the appropriate language changes and additional tax, taxation references. Any comments or questions? Hearing that, can someone make the, the motion around approval of the license application as presented?
I move that we approve the marijuana license application as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Chad, that we approve the marijuana license application as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. That takes us through our published agenda at this point in time. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
I have something, but I think it's probably for an agenda next time, but it reminded me when you brought up the water tower issue that we're having, didn't we hire an engineering company to project manage that for us?
Yes, and there are, according to Sue, there are in, I can't speak to the detail, there is work going on right now between the engineering company and construction company, et cetera, to walk us through.
What happened?
What happened and what these responsibilities and resolution around. And not only that, the timing was delayed from what the original committed time for completion was, as you recall.
Yes.
That whole.
That's why.
Arena is still work in process.
That's why I thought the whole purpose of us hiring an engineer was so John didn't have to necessarily supervise something that he may.
Yeah.
He may not be highly qualified for, not be not qualified, just.
I believe Eagle, if I remember the company's name correct, is the engineering group, but in any case, that's, that's an ongoing discussion that's going on that. Any other comments or business? Anyone here for public comment in our second round of public comment activity? Hearing that, items for next agenda. I think we mentioned the, having as a topic, at least for discussion and update, the Parks Director Arena.
Yeah, that should stay on, don't we have that on as an old business, or?
Right.
Wasn't it on there?
It isn't on there right now.
It's not on there, sorry. Yes.
It was not on there because it was told that the mayor and the treasurer would follow the report once they got the information.
Okay.
If they're ready, we'll, we'll have it.
You have, you have two no action taken, and those will automatically go on your agenda. If you want to reference those, that will be agenda.
Yep, Chiawassee Tornado Siren Project, it would be one. And probably missed the other one.
Grant, I agree with you saying.
Yep, exactly.
And then if there's anything about the engineering company, I know they're working on it, I'd just like to have, if we've had any official response or communication with them.
So you're looking for reports from John when he comes in?
Yeah, just.
From John on the, it's usually here the first.
Correct. If there's any new information on that, he didn't have it when I had the discussion with him last time.
So you want to report regarding Dixon Engineering on how they feel the city?
Correct. Something, that'd be, just, yes, I'd like to know what happened.
Okay, I'll try to do, I'm trying to listen, make sure I understand and summarize for the agenda items, all I'm asking for. Okay.
The answer maybe, I don't know.
Well, I'll take, I'm going to put it for what you said as an agenda item, and then I will get, share it with John, or Larry will share it with John, whatever, whoever is to him.
Yeah, right now, I know it's still a work in process. More concerned right now about making sure they've got a solid plan for timing for the required repairs.
Absolutely, and I think that maybe, since there is a mistake, however it happened, they have to drain it, so maybe they should inspect it again. At no cost to the city.
Anything else this evening? If not, meeting adjourned at 7:47.
It's got to be a record.